9C, it is our addendum. It is the Development Services Professional Services Contract with Dr. Robert G. Morbett. It is a resolution, a resolution approving the professional services contract with Robert G. Morbett Jr. for consultant services in connection with the Volusia Safe Harbor Transitional Shelter Project for a term of fourteen months commencing January 1st, 2015, for a monthly fee of $7,201.25 plus reimbursable expenses not to exceed $35,000 for the term of the contract, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the contract and providing an effective date.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I'm sure we have one or two speakers.
We do have speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Would you like?
Yes, ma'am.
The first speaker is Thomas Redman, and on deck is Jenny Nazak.
My name is Thomas Redman. I live in Orlando, Florida, on Sarita Court. Mr. Mayor and council members, I've given each one of you a package, and I won't go through my PowerPoint. I do want to say one thing. I recommend that you vote to delay this vote, and what I mean by that is on three premises. Number one, the Safe Harbor Plan as it's written should not be administrated because the most vulnerable population, which is the chronically homeless, those with mental disabilities, those with physical disabilities, those that are sixty years of age or older or under eighteen, they're not going to fit into this shelter model. They're still going to be on the streets. You're going to build this shelter, and all the people that are downtown are still going to be there. The chronically homeless can be fixed only one way, that's permanent supportive housing. So that's one reason I'd like to see you delay it. I'd like something in there for the chronically homeless. Number two, I must tell you that I know I'm on television, so I'm saying this, it's very difficult for me to say, your consultant needs to be vetted. I can't say it any plainer than that. I can tell you in my analysis of the seven cities he's served, he has no appreciable gain. As a matter of fact, Pinellas County is the fastest growing county in homelessness, and if you check the news from Tampa Bay in June of this year, or call those cities, they're not impressed with the results. Third, this agenda item was not even up on the city's website as of when I walked in the door today. This was an addendum. I called the city manager's office. I asked yesterday why it still was not on, and I couldn't even get a copy of the addendum because I lived in Orlando, and you're more than welcome to check with your IT people or other people in this room. So for those three reasons, one, the most vulnerable population's not being taken care of; two, there was no room for the public to know this was happening tonight because I would have had a lot bigger crowd; and three, your consultant needs to be vetted. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Jenny Nazak, and on deck is Pastor Mike Pastore.
Hello, good evening and Happy New Year, everybody. I'm Jenny Nazak, and I live at 413 Harvey, and I am actually in support of this Safe Harbor facility. I don't think that there is one solution to address the homeless population, but as I understand it, this program has been effective in other cities according to my information, and I think it's very sensible. It'll save the extreme costs of policing and other costs that are associated with managing homeless people that are now on the streets. And it's not a solution for everybody, but that doesn't mean it shouldn't be implemented. It's morally unacceptable that there are people who don't have a place to sleep, and we just have to do everything we can, and this is one of the things. Thank you for listening.
Michael Pastore, and on deck is Troy Ray.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Commissioners. My name is Michael Pastore, also known on Ridgewood Avenue as Pastor Mike. I'm an advocate and activist for people experiencing homelessness in Daytona Beach. Let me say first that I am in favor of an emergency shelter and that Dr. Morbett should be hired to lead the effort. My preference would be for the city of Daytona Beach to hire an individual full-time to act as a homelessness czar, as has been successfully done in other cities. However, the political will does not exist for such an endeavor, so we'll just rent a czar. The proposed contract only tasked him to create a new bureaucracy to build a box and ask him to go around and ask other cities in the county to pay for the box. The thinking seems to be that if we build the box, then all other facets will fall into place. Build the box, and they will come. The Daytona Chamber asked that 100% of the surrounding cities in the county participate, and 25% of the budget funded by the nonprofits. This is a tall order. Mayor Henry at Beachside Neighborhood Watch recently raised concern about what the city should do if funding goals fall short. Should we go it alone? That's a good question. Commissioner White, in a recent opinion piece in the News Journal, requested consideration and support be given for ordinances that create ground rules for panhandling and feeding programs. The new contract does not address that until the last phase, at least one year away. She states that our homeless people deserve an organized approach to meeting the basic needs, food, a place to use, a bathroom, and a place to sleep. How long will you make us wait for that? Dr. Morbett can't be expected to breeze into town, wave a magic wand, and fix everything at once. It's going to take follow-up and follow-through. My suggestion for the creation of a citizen panel advisory board to address homelessness issues is the best way to follow-through on Dr. Morbett's recommendations. Mr. Mayor, you said after Dr. Morbett's presentation, now the hard work begins. I agree. Let's get to work.
Pastor Mike, your time has expired. Thank you. Our next speaker is Troy Ray, and on deck is Derek Harris, but I believe he's already left, and also Pastor Mugalla, so our next speaker would be Gabriel Varga.
Good evening to you all, and Happy New Year. Troy Ray, Executive Director of Halifax Urban Ministries, and I reside at 333 Georgetown Drive. Reflecting on the events that have brought us to tonight's decision regarding Volusia Safe Harbor, I recall four salient life lessons I have learned over the past thirty-five years. The first is the Army troop-leading procedure, which I had to learn as an Army infantry officer. It was eight steps. Receive the mission, issue a warning order, make a tentative plan, start necessary movement, recon order, complete the plan, issue the complete order, and then supervise and follow-up. We've completed the first four of those steps. Tonight is the decision whether or not we complete the remaining four. Voltaire is famously quoted as saying that "the perfect is the enemy of the good." If we focus on refining at each step, we will never accomplish this task. The world business community has embraced Vilfredo Pareto's eighty-twenty principle, and so should we for this project. The first eighty percent of the job gets done with twenty percent of the energy. Let's complete a good project, and then we'll be in a position to perfect it. Finally, this comes from an old cottage professor of mine that grew up on a farm in Iowa. Each morning, his chore was to feed corn to the pigs before going to school. He said that invariably, a bushel basket of corn usually contained at least one nubbin, a fully-developed ear of corn that had no kernels on it. And equally invariably, some pig would get a hold of that nubbin and run squealing off to the other side of the pigpen, and all of the other pigs would follow, leaving the good corn behind. Projects like this one are full of nubbins. I suggest we remain focused on where the good corn is and not chase after every character with a new and improved theory. The city commission has done well in this endeavor. I encourage you to keep it moving forward.
Our next speaker is Gabriel Varga, and on deck is Teresa Tumanello.
Tumanello.
Tumanello. I'd like that on this paper.
Mayor Henry.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, City Manager Chisholm. It's a pleasure to be here today. Haven't been in front of this commission in a long time. It's Wednesday night, prayer meeting night.
Yes, it is.
I've tried to encourage the governments to not have meetings on Wednesday night because of prayer meeting, but that's here and there. I've been involved in the homeless issue here in...
State your name and address, please.
I am so sorry. My name is Gabriel Varga, and my address is 1226 Gamble Place. I'm the pastor of the Ridgewood Avenue Baptist Church. I'm also the pastor of the Daytona Rescue Mission, and I am a volunteer chaplain for the police department. I've been here since ninety-two, and I came here to make a difference in the homeless community. I've been able to make some difference, and we've seen some lives changed. I've never been more excited than I am right now at what that's going on here in Daytona Beach in regards to the homeless, especially in regards to this body and the leadership that is put forward. I think you made a wonderful decision by hiring Robert Morbett. He's an expert in the field. I've been involved in this kind of business for forty years. I've talked with him personally. I've talked with him on the telephone. I've texted him. He's an expert. I would highly recommend that he would be, I think this is a very reasonable amount of money that is offered for his expertise. I would encourage, don't get discouraged by anyone else, but go for, keep being the leaders in this thing because it's exciting. But government has to be involved in it. It's not just the rescue missions and the homes and the private organizations that are concerned, but the government must be vitally involved in this, and this is going to be very important. And with the government involved, and the churches, and the other organizations that are concerned for homeless, and very important to the business community, who you can have a very much ability to influence them, so together, this can be done, and I'm excited about it and looking forward to working with it and going forward. God bless each one of you.
Bless you. Thank you.
Teresa Tumanello, and on deck is Jim Cameron.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Tumanello, and I reside at 249 Columbus Avenue. I am a member of Our Lady of the Lord's Catholic Community, and I am also a member of the Faith I am here tonight on behalf of Faith and our thirty congregations. We are concerned that more people, that there have been people who have spoken against this item, and we believe that they do not understand our political situation here in our community. Some of them aren't even from Daytona Beach. Faith has worked very hard to include the voices of the homeless, as we have researched best practices for homeless assistance centers. Many people that are homeless in Daytona Beach have helped Faith develop our solution, and they approve of Dr. Morbett's plan. Please, do not let anything distract you from helping us better our city and approve Dr. Morbett's plan. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jim Cameron, and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
I'm Jim Cameron, Senior Vice President, Government Relations, Daytona Regional Chamber, and wanted to state that Chamber has gone on record in support of the Safe Harbor Plan, and I believe, hopefully, that you all have received a copy of our position paper on that in support of. And we stipulated in that paper that we see this as a jail diversion program, and we supported this after we took a survey of our members, and at least seventy percent of our members, if memory serves, said that they wanted to see some type of action in this direction on the homeless issue. You also find in our position paper that we did put some strict stipulations behind our support on that because we do want to see a majority of, more than a majority, of our city supporting this. We don't want to see this coming down to the financial support of one or two local governments and all, because that's not going to be fair to them. But we do want to see support from our social service agencies, though, and in closing, we just see this as too important of an issue to maintain the status quo. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson, and on deck is James Harper.
Marjorie Johnson, 122 South Cootred. I am an advocate for the homeless. Now, I would like to see this issue given top priority. We need to focus on this issue, and I repeat, give it top priority. Our homeless people are walking the streets every day. They're at the library. They're sitting around at the bus stations. They have no food and nowhere to go. This city should be concerned about this. I see you spending a lot of money on a lot of issues, and this one needs to be taken care of immediately. It's freezing outside. They're hungry. They're walking the street. My heart goes out to them. And I would like to say that this contract with Robert Morbett needs to be approved so that we can move forward with this issue. I support the Safe Harbor program, and I would like to say that we want the homeless to have a place to go and a place to live. So I say to you tonight, City Commissioners, Mayor, City Manager, make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our next speaker is James Harper.
James Harper, 341 Weaver Street. This is the third time I spoke today, and I know you all are probably sick of hearing me talk, but I'm not able to come to meetings as much as I'd like to unfortunately because of my current employment situation, but every chance I get an opportunity to speak, I'm going to. And issues that I find that I'm very supportive of, I'm very supportive of a homeless situation. The only issue I really have is how it was determined to pay someone $7,200 and something dollars a month. How you all came up with that figure is interesting to me, but it might need to be reexamined. I mean, this man is probably very much worth it. I was here when he did his presentation, and this place was full to the brim, and it was full outside, so apparently, he's very, you know, professional. My main concern is what happens after this Safe Harbor is completed and built, because again, there's still going to be employment issues. They'll need to be hired. I mean, our own city government, you all discriminate against folks that are homeless because you don't hire folks who may have a felony or may have something on their record. This is not the only city that doesn't do that. Maybe you all can set an example by giving people a second chance, who may have stumbled, but this city does not hire people who have those issues. I do know of only one person, I think, that does have that issue that still works for the city, but you don't hire anybody else. So not just the city, but also all these, you know, big business people around here. There are a lot of people that don't hire folks who are homeless, so have that stigma attached to them. So that needs to be addressed, you know, after this thing is built, because the ship has already left the building, so we know this is going to happen, in one way or another. Also, affordable housing needs to be addressed. Last time I was here, you all approved a project where you're going to build $250,000 and $300,000 homes, which nobody living in Daytona Beach can afford, and of course, the homeless are not going to be able to afford these things. And you've only got so much, you know, as far as, so much, you only have so much as far as the housing, like the, you know, Pine Haven and those areas. So these things need to be thought about, you know, as it comes to the conclusion, because after it is built and they're in a safe harbor, then what? You know, are people going to hire them? Are they going to have jobs? You know, are people going to be welcoming of them? Are they going to continue to be harassed possibly by the police because they're not out at that safe harbor and they're still walking the streets? Just bringing some issues to the forefront.
That is our final speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we've had a number of speakers, comments from the commission, questions.
I have a few comments.
Yes, ma'am.
I support this. I do want to address a couple of things, just different letters people have sent me and different letters to the editor. I just want to kind of, I want to say a couple of things because I know that sometimes people don't have all the information that we have, or they haven't thought about it as much, so I just wanted to go through a couple things that I, themes that I've heard. One is that we're going to pay somebody to help us with this, and I think any time that you want to hold somebody accountable and you want them to work for you on a regular basis, you normally give them some sort of money for that. So I support that. And there's also some editorials, just people worried about the long-term success of the shelter and other shelters that may have been done throughout the county, and I don't think any of us going into this believe that, whether it's Dr. Morbett or anybody else, that that consultant is going to determine the long-term selection or success of this program. So I think we all, we know that, you know, you hire, maybe you hire a business consultant to help you with your business, but in five years, if your business isn't doing well, it might be because of something that you're doing. So I think getting a consultant here is the first step and a good step to take. And there's also been a lot of references to Pinellas and Sarasota, and it was almost a year ago, or a little over a year ago, that I was in Pinellas and was in the downtown area that was, you know, the most concentrated area, and then also visited the shelter. And if we can, being in that shelter and seeing how well-run it was and seeing how the faith community, I mean, they had every meal planned out for the next six months that a different church was bringing. I mean, it was so, it was so well-done, and I would be so proud if we could come together with something that is that well-organized and is helping the community and helping the people who need the services. Also, there's been a couple mentions of, you know, creating an administrator or a czar, and I think that in our contract, it talks about creating a governing board, and that governing board is probably going to have somebody that will be in charge of that. So I do think that there will be somebody here locally, I want everyone to know, that will probably be working on this for quite a long time. And lastly, there was a, there were two editorials. One of them talked about making sure that it's really data-driven and that we don't just spend money without knowing what we're spending money on, and we're getting, we're getting to the end of, I think Pastor Troy mentioned, you know, when you start something, if you think about everything, you never get started. But I do think that having an accountable shelter that we understand, you know, what we're spending money on and if it is successful, of course, you know, that would be something that we will look for. And lastly, there was, let's see, vetting the endgame before we start investing. So there's been a lot of great input from the community, and I just wanted them to know that, I think we've all listened, we've taken it on, and I feel very excited that we're moving forward with this next step as a commission, and I'm excited to vote yes on this tonight.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Trigger.
I've been doing research about the homeless issue for a few weeks, and I've come to the conclusion that there are many opinions about how it's the best way to try to solve it, and I am so glad that we're finally getting ready to get something done about it. And I like that the contract is in phases so that we can know earlier if this is not the solution for us. I was very glad to hear that Dr. Phil, Father Phil, say that we had a lot of people already on board. However, I don't like the idea that Phase One is going to take nine months setting up governing issues before we know who definitely is going to be on board with us and how much monetary support we're going to get. I think that we cannot afford Daytona Beach alone to do this. I think we need partners, and I think we need to get the partners in place before we get the governing boards in place. According to the contract, that the city manager can do that, can give advanced written approval for the consultant to provide Phase Two services before Phase One services, and I think this is the logical way to go about it. We need to know first who our partners are going to be and how much is going to be contributed with the anticipated funding and revenue before wasting time creating legal structures and boards, and I think that's what we need to do first before we get the governing boards. I think we need to get our partners in line. And I've heard the pros and cons about Dr. Morbett's proposal. It sounds good, but we need to make sure this is going to work for Volusia County, and I think the idea that it is set up in phases is very good for us, but I do would like to put Phase Two first and Phase One second.
I'm going to comment on that. I don't agree, and I'll tell you why. Because I think that what you'll do, I think it'll happen simultaneously in the sense, Ruth, is what I'm saying, is that as you go to the community and you look for people to support the project, and you start setting up the board, if the support is not there, it's not going anywhere. But if you've got the agencies, the business partners, those in the community that are going to say, yes, we're going to be on the governing board, yes, we're going to be a part of setting up this structure, then it will, should flow from there that, when there's that widespread support, then those entities that were going to ask to help fund it, the other government, they're going to see that there is widespread community support, and there should be overlap between the governmental bodies and the private support and the business support that will be a part of this whole process. You know, one of the criticisms we've received is that there hasn't been community input in terms of how the contract's being structured, and I think that as we move into setting up the governing board, it's just my opinion, that that will allow the community input as well as we move into the other phases. So I don't know how the rest of you all feel, but that's, to me, how it logically should flow.
You don't think nine months is a long time to be doing that?
Well, it doesn't mean you wouldn't move into Phase Two as you're doing Phase One. Go ahead, Jim, because I mean, you know, we've talked about this at length.
The way I see this, you know, we divided up in phases, so we had specific targets to hit within certain time frames, so that doesn't mean it doesn't get accelerated and that it doesn't, there may be, particularly in that first one and two, is going to be talking to one of the same people in many cases.
Right.
So you're going to know what kind of support you've got going forward, so that's, I don't see that as a problem, is what I'm really saying. But we've got to have some structure to work with and some way to evaluate, you know, are we going to go forward or not? And I wanted to be sure we build it in early and have a reporting mechanism so that you would know where we're at and what's happening and be comfortable with each phase of this project.
And that's the other thing, you know, we're supposed to be getting, that was a question I had, you know, we're supposed to be getting monthly reports to you, and then how is that going to be handled as far as we're concerned? Just tell us how that's going to work.
You're going to get them as soon as I get them.
Okay.
And then if it, I can, I haven't really thought in detail of how we'd go through, you know, with moving forward in each phase, but I want you to be a part of that process.
Absolutely. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm so sorry. I think I'm allergic to Commissioner Henry. I have never had this until I got on this commission, whatever this is. But I know we have the back-out clause. Does a phase have to be completed to back out, or we can back out at any time?
Anytime. We can stop at any point, and it's, the way it happens, if we stop it, then it's cost incurred up to that point, that date and time.
Okay. Thank you.
To kind of split the baby on where Ruth and Pam were, I think we do need to kind of let, get the governance structure, get some more, have to be more of a formal presentation that can be made to the potential partners, but I definitely agree with Ruth that, you know, waiting until September 1, you know, the language in here, I had to read it a couple of times to get more comfortable with it, that, you know, Phase Two won't begin until Phase One is completed, you know, that's definitely not the right way to go. But I do believe we need, you know, a couple of months at least of getting the format together and having something to take to people to describe more of the operational structure, who's responsible for what. This is going to sink or swim based on whether we get the partners. I mean, we cannot do this by ourselves. We cannot do this with only, like, the East Volusia Cities. So, you know, I truly believe that probably after about two or three months of getting with the community-based organizations and the community itself, that there will be enough of a structure to go out and start engaging in formal dialogue with the other municipalities in the county about, you know, really getting them on board with, you know, at least some... in the county about, you know, really getting them on board with, you know, at least some sort of letter of intent to participate, you know, so we can, you know, it's going to snowball once we can really get some momentum going. We have to have a product to sell first. I wholly support this. You know, I've been working on homeless issues since the early nineties, believe it or not. So, you know, I've seen about every solution that's known to man, and, you know, it's funny, if you think about the many billions of dollars that have gone to consultants over the years, maybe we would have spent some of that on actual, you know, things that help homeless people, we would have been a little better off today. But we're doing the right thing. This isn't going to cure the whole issue, but it's going to get us, you know, a good anchor, a good base, starting point to go from so that we can, you know, help find those people that really need, you know, that have substance abuse and mental health issues and need more intense services that would really be able to provide it at a facility like this. So I think it's great, and I'm ready to get moving with something.
I'm ready to get moving, too.
Yeah.
If I could just clarify one thing, and I'll give you a little of the logic on the phasing and the whys. The importance of having it be not just Daytona Beach is paramount, that it's not just Daytona Beach doing this, and having a board that's become...it takes ownership of the process as it goes forward is key to that not being just a Daytona Beach project. And that's...that was some of that thought process. I don't disagree that we've got to know who the partners are going to be in the process, and we've got to get them on board as we go forward, but some of that is going to be...it's going to be easier to do that if some of the people that are actually talking to them are not necessarily from Daytona Beach or represent Daytona Beach. So that's some of that logic.
My voice is getting a little hoarse. I think I'd be allergic to Commissioner Henry, too.
Yeah, well, I guess he's going to have to take it tonight, because I would say that...
I don't mind, because my voice is good and strong. So I don't know what it is. But I do want to speak on this just for a second. And I'm sitting here thinking, you know, when we first started this, we had a lot of support, and now, just like all the other commissioners, me too, Mayor, we start receiving emails and letters of some people who are speaking against it. So I'm sitting here thinking, you know, we can leave things the way they are, which is unacceptable to me.
Yeah.
Because we're going to have the same results. The nine months, the year going to pass by anyway, and we're still going to see the same problems we got. There's no one solution to this, but they tell me, we sit and do nothing, nothing happens.
You're right.
But at least if we make a step forward and see what happens, then we'll know whether or not this is for Volusia County and for Daytona Beach. So to the Mayser's, I'm going to have to say this to them, that I'm for moving forward, at least find out, will this work for us? Because I can't sit here and continue to sit here and see the homeless situation where it is and do nothing, and I'm going to fully support this. Thank you.
Marie was going to...were you going to bring...
No, I was just going to point out that Phase Two, the goal is to get binding commitments.
Right.
You know, clearly, that's going to be part of the discussion in Phase One, but I don't think you'll be able to get a binding, an enforceable commitment for a long-term agreement, you know, without that governing...who's going to have a seat at the table on how this runs? So that...I think that was the idea on this phasing, but it is flexible in many events.
And it says that, yeah, and, you know, we talked before, and we talked about doing the contract, about the leadership within the community, and I think, to me, what's important is that it's not just Marbit out there talking the talk, that we have the leadership from the community, whoever that turns out to be, and it's got to be county-wide, and, you know, some of us have...of the roundtable, Chet's sitting there, you know, we've talked about it's got to be Deland, Daytona, Orange, you know, because it's got to be seen if it's going to move forward as a whole participation in Volusia County and not just one segment. So there's got to be more than one face, in my opinion, as we try to move forward with it. So that's, to me, the other logic for the governing board. Two other things have been said in some of the stuff we've received in the last few days in the emails, and you said that it's a piece, but when we talk about that families aren't included, it specifically aren't, you all know that from Marbit's report, you've received an email that talked about that, and that teenagers and young adults weren't included, and I heard a reference tonight to those under eighteen, and I want to make sure everybody understands, and those of you up here do. If you're under the age of eighteen, you're a minor, and the state, the Department of Children and Families, would address your concerns. Those students that are in the school districts that are homeless and unaccompanied youth, as you all well know, because you've heard me talk about it, we address. And then families are addressed as well through many different programs in the county. So this is not designed, was never designed, to deal with those populations. Those are being addressed in other ways in the community, so I just want that out there in the record as well.
Okay. Any others? Okay, well, we have a motion in a second, and I guess I'll just chime in since much has been said. And after we've said everything, you know, tonight is a night of action, and we would all, I think, agree that, you know, we've talked a lot about this for well over a year, and now is the time to do something, and I'm very proud of this body of elected officials who have decided to say that we're not just going to talk, we're going to continue to do something, and that we're going to try to lead. Now, whether we can gain the buy-in that we desire remains to be seen, but what I will say is that if we, as a community, as a county, as a city, are going to be successful, it's going to be...that success is going to be determined by a sustained energy by all of us that is required to iron out the details, to gain the commitment, and to maintain the commitment, because, you know, you can start a race, but it takes a lot of energy to really make a dent, an impact on a scourge as problematic as homelessness. And so we're going to be requiring...calling on all parties for that. I think that the signs are indicating that the county will join us. I really believe that. And as much as we can say, we do have other people who have said that they're partners, they're going to be partners, but it takes this process to make those things become binding. So we have to start, and so let us begin the heavy lifting. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, that'll be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes, not opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to our item number ten, it is comments and inquiries from the City Commission, City Manager, and City Attorney.